All right, we're gonna get started. Good evening. I hope everyone is doing well. Thank you all for being here. Welcome to the March 10th, 2022 Parks and Recreation Family Services Committee. Present with us are committee members, Councilmember Flynn, Councilmember Love not here, Councilmember, Councilmember Sergio Adams, Councilmember Megan Keegan, Councilmember Kelly Kimbrough. Also with us, we have Parks and Recreation Commissioner, Commissioner Jonathan Jones with us. Another staff, Joe Johnson, and also Youth Workforce Diamond also with us. And also with the council staff, we have Ethan Samuel through the Legislative Analyst, and also we have City Clerk Daniel Calipsey. Thank you all so much for being here with us. Today, we're gonna go over our Summer Youth Employment Program, which is, quite frankly, a phenomenal program in our city. They continue to do great work year in and year out. And today, we just wanted to have an introduction to some of the new members and also to the council, but also talk about some of the great work that's happening with Parks and Recreation, also Summer Youth Employment. So without further ado, I'd like to give the floor to Commissioner Jonathan Jones.
And thank you, Councilmember. If I can share my screen. The controller would allow me to sort of screen.
One second, we got you.
Okay, no problem. Thank you. While I'm waiting, good evening, everybody. This is a great opportunity after coming through so much time away from in-person activities. We're really excited about having our young people around the city working at different work sites. I've had the opportunity to touch base with many of our newest council members about this opportunity. Some have even participated in our program in different capacities before, so we're really excited. Before we get started, I did want to let everybody know that as of 3:00 PM today, we already have 288 young people in the city of Albany registered for our program. This is huge for us because we know that around this year, this time last year, we didn't have such a number to feel good about where we were, but we're very excited about the 288. Of course, many of our Albany City School District children do not have school tomorrow, so we anticipate over the weekend through this meeting and then for other work that we're doing that we'll talk about a little later, that this number will continue to rise. Share my screen here, and we'll get right into the Summer Youth Employment Program. All right, so let's make it. Presentation. All right, so Summer Youth Employment Program for 2022. The youth of today are the leaders of tomorrow. We know that so many of our young people, including our Councilmember Jack Flynn, have been a part of this program. And those were the words of Nelson Mandela. And in this year, our program will not be restricted. Any young person who lives in the city of Albany within the ages of 14 and 18 can be a part of our program. There's a process. We'll walk you through a little bit of that later on today in the presentation, but all of our young people will make at least the 13, 20. There's no overtime for this program allowed, but 13, 20 per hour, young people, up to 100 hours for the summer. There is an entire application which you can complete on your phone as well as on your computer. And then there's an in-person documentation handoff. We'll talk about that a little bit. And then orientation. Each young person and their families are welcome. Each young person is required, but their families are also encouraged to join them during the orientation, which will take place later on in May. The program will follow the city's guidance on health and safety protocols with respect to COVID. But each individual worksite may have different rules and protocols. We will be working with them to follow their protocols for our young people's safety. A discipline will follow a progressive discipline model. This is what we've been doing over the course of our eight years here, and simply that is, we don't kick our kids out of the program after one instance. We talk to them. We have job coaches. We talk to their parents. And then if it ever gets to that situation, that is the last resort. But we believe in our young people and have protocols in place to make sure they're at their best. And then council members, we have an ax for you later on. So our program timeline, right now, we're in the registration phase. In May, from the 16th to the 20th, we'll have a family orientation. In June, we'll do some pre-survey work and we'll continue to work with our work sites. Work sites can apply as of right now. We have three confirmed with 36 verbal commitments. But during that week or during that month, we'll be able to work with our work sites a little closer and do our site visits. Our program starts on July 11th, and it will conclude on August 12th. And council members, I know that many of you have been to our recognition event and seen how such a good time it is, and we hope that you all can join us again this year. For our registration process, it is in four parts, right? We talked about the digital application that you could do from your phone. Our young people have done that before. We started that, I believe it was last year. Then there's the printout and payroll packet. Those payroll packets are also also in the first, for a second, can everybody see this? Is it moving along or is it not moving? The presentation? It's not moving, okay.
It's not moving.
All right.
If you want to email it to me, I'll see if I can help on my end, either Ethan or I.
Let's do that. Give me one second. I'm just gonna stop for just a second. Okay, give me one second. Okay, let's try it again. Try it this way. So if you all could tell me now, do you see a different slide?
Yes.
Okay, cool. All right, so I'm right here at the registration process. We talked about March 1st through the 31st. For this year, council members, we really need your help. We need a hard stop date. We know our young people have been informed about it. Our parents are informed about it. But we cannot go beyond March 31st for capacity issues at this point. Step two, there's a printout payroll packet. Our young people at their schools, as well as at our different offices and city buildings, have a payroll packet printed for them, and so if they don't have the capabilities to do so, it is already printed for them in many instances. Step three, they'll bring that packet later on, starting actually as early as Monday, 3:00 PM. They'll be able to bring that packet to Bleecker Stadium and meet with our intake specialists and our staff to go over the documentation, and then that will allow them to get the notice about orientation, which is step four. All right, so now I'm gonna kick it to our program coordinator. James Cobbins is gonna talk about our recruitment strategy. James?
Good evening. My name is James Cobbins. I'm the program facilitator. One of my tasks is to recruit work sites for the Summer Youth Employment Program for 2022. In terms of the planning process, I was able to sit down with Deputy Tucker, and we were able to compile lists from 2019 to 2021 of work sites that were in good standing. And we were able to send out letters for them to review and see if they would be interested in working as a work site for this year. We got a positive feedback. We have 36 confirmed, verbal confirms. And that's something we hope for a lot more because we expect a bigger population of youth to work this year. I've also had meetings with the Albany School District Administrative Staff, Jody Cumford, and also I met with Kimberly Roaring. Jody's confirmed that she would take up to take the 40, up to 40 kids this year, so that's good just for her school. I've also had confirmations from Sheridan Prep, also it's Tony Clement, so that's ongoing, and hopefully we'll have a lot more in the future. And I've also met with Kip. They want to like to expand their role in SYEP as well. I've met with Kate Better several times, and she's excited by the opportunity to have more kids at her work sites. We've also, in terms of correspondence, we've also planned to send out a mailchimp to the past 2021 work sites. We're developing that right now, so that will be going out next week. In terms of plan to connect local businesses, I have actually met with a couple of local businesses so far, and I've got a couple bakeries, a couple other organizations that are excited to participate for the first time in the Summer Youth and Plan Program. Thank you.
Great, James, thank you. And so for our enrichment, this is something that is very unique to our program. Diamond on our team has been working on this for a few years now, and very simply, I mean, many of you have been guest speakers, but this allows our young people to learn from people in the field, caring adults and our professionals about what they do, as well as work peer-to-peer in different small project groups, as well as understand more about the current market. We know that many of our young people at this stage in their lives are still unsure about what they want to do. Some are very sure what they want to do, and some of them, when they get the chance to try it, really don't want to do that. And so this is the exploration space where we get professionals, we get technicians, we get educators, and they come in, they work with our young people, and then our staff also gets the opportunity to work with our young people. And this is a paid opportunity on Fridays throughout the program that we will continue. The other thing that I wanted to highlight here just simply is that we use the QR code this year, and for the first time, and that was leading people directly to the website, as well as lawn signs. And many of our parks and our government buildings, we put lawn signs out for the information. Years prior, we've had the APD boards out, but with many of you knowing that people are just not traveling the way they used to, this gave us an opportunity to still be creative with our messaging, but at the same time, keep it neighborhood-based so that people can be informed. And based on where our numbers are, we believe that is something that we will continue. Here's a look at who our team is. You've heard from James Cobbins, Janay Parker, who is our case manager, who is also gonna be working with Linda Di Pietro. Linda Di Pietro has an award named after her because she's been a part of this program for some years, and she keeps us afloat, and Linda is just super special for all of us. Diamond Keles, who I just mentioned, runs our enrichment, but at the same time, Diamond, James, and Janay work out of our Youth Opportunity Office at 382 Clinton. And then Mike Malicio is an intern, but Mike Malicio has been a part of our program for years. He's more than just an intern. He handles a lot of our backend work. He handles a lot of the cause with our parents, and he is a valuable member of our team. So lastly, I want to end with some questions for common council members, and you don't need to answer this directly, but it is something where we really need your help. One area we need your help is to recruit non-traditional summer youth work sites. For example, this year, we'll be working with Honest Way Co-op for the first year. We'll be working with Price Stopper, and James also mentioned some other entities. We like to also know if there are businesses in your community, in your constituency area, that you think we can reach out to or you wanted to highlight. Maybe they don't have the capacity to be a work site, but maybe we can help them with their project, and our young people can work with them on that. Do you know any speakers outside of yourself that can help us on those Fridays talk about their career pathways? That would be interested. Wusu is a fan favorite. He's been doing this for many years, and as a teacher, I think he cheats a little bit, uses some of his curriculum with our young people, but him and Alfredo have been very big in our program. And can you assist with raffles and prizes? When we have our End of the Summer Recognition Event, we like to give away things for our young people to show them we care, but at the same time, there are businesses in your areas that might be an opportunity to promote some of the things they're doing by getting some raffles and prizes to our young people and their families. And then again, as I mentioned, is there any projects in your community? I know I've talked to Councilwoman Keegan about a project. Is there something you can do in your community, which a constituency, in order to get some feedback? So those were the questions that we have. I introduced some of the team, and I'll just leave the floor open. I'll stop sharing and leave the floor open for any questions from the councilor members.
First, I just want to say thank you for the comprehensive presentation. Before we begin, I'd like to also recognize council members who have joined us. Majority Leader Jenny Farrell, Committee Member Derek Johnson, Committee Member Gabriella Romero, Councilmember Thomas Hoey. And now we're gonna open the floor for questioning. We're gonna start with committee members first. Any committee member have any question or statement? I see Councilmember Jack Flynn's hand up.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. You have such a great program. Have there any other municipalities or towns that use your program since it's so well?
Well, thank you for the compliment. I appreciate it. Use our program, not that we know of. I mean, our workforce department also works with the county's program, but it's separate and independent from our program here. Those are TANF kids only, not all eligibility. But no, we've been able to connect with different cities across the nation to talk about different facets in our program. For example, the enrichment opportunity. We worked with the city of Louisville. We worked with Hartford as well on that project through an organization called CCRY from Class, but no, we haven't partnered with anybody just yet.
What's that? You said 288 kids are registered right now. Do you know what, how many of them by phone are on the breakdown? Like, are most of them by phone because of the technology?
I don't have that information, but I'll be able to pull that out and try to figure it out. Hopefully, I think we can pull that out to Kintor. I'm not sure.
And I have a question about the sites. What sites do you need help with? Like, in my word, I mean, maybe it's a question for James. Is there anyone you need us to help with that you can think about? Or just give us a list of what sites you have or where you need help with?
Yeah, I need Commissioner Jones has a list of sites that we've confirmed already. Okay. That we can send that to you, and then we can go from there, and then we can connect and see what sites in your area that we could reach out to.
Awesome. And John, the golf, I know we're talking about the golf program at Capitol Hill. Is there any feedback, or are we gonna do that, you know, for the kids?
Yeah, we're still, we're still working on that with PGA. If we do it, we would probably have to do it this year as a standalone pilot and then try to get PGA to come onboard next year. But yeah, I'm still interested in doing a golf program, and if you know of, you know, anyone who else is interested, let's try to get them together. We have a meeting with DGS tomorrow, actually tomorrow morning, right, Justin? Yeah, we have a meeting with DGS tomorrow. That would be one of the topics we'll talk about, in particular with that program.
All right, thank you.
Any other committee members?
Romero and Johnson have their hands up.
Yeah, Councilmember Romero?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and thank you, Commissioner, for coming and kind of explaining this program to us. I have so many ideas about youth engagement, so I'd love to have a conversation with you offline about kind of some funky projects that I'd love kind of your support with. What, when you say "non-traditional work sites," what do you mean by that? I missed like maybe the first five minutes of your presentation, so my apologies if you explained that already, but I'm really interested in that concept, so I'm curious like what that would mean.
Yeah, so when I say "non-traditional work sites," I'm talking about, for example, the port, right? We'd never had an inn at the Port of Albany before because, you know, that's usually for experienced people to work on heavy machinery. But they were just so generous to realize the talent we have in our community, and where to create a project, and where our young people can still be on campus at the port. But at the same time, that as a work site is just a non-traditional space. When I'm thinking of traditional, I'm thinking about campsites, you know, school sites, school-based sites, parks. But this was totally, I mean, our kids were wearing hard hats. They weren't doing heavy work that was anything illicit, but they were doing things that were futuristic, and I'm so thankful for the port because some of those young people now have an interest in the STEM fields, where without that experience, they may not have thought about it in that way.
What are, and one single follow-up, sorry, and thank you for your time. What type of placements do we have in the arts? I find that the city of Albany has so many great opportunities for that that are sometimes not as cultivated or utilized, so I'd love to kind of help create those partnerships with the theaters or some of the other kind of musical opportunities that we have here. And you can save this for later, because I know you guys are gonna send the list of sites, but I'm just curious.
No, 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 it's great. The Palace has been a continued partner. We have Capitol Rep that has verbally committed this year. Youth FX has always been a partner of ours, and they were actually an award winner. And then there are, there's one other site, but I don't want to mention them yet because we still got some work to do there. But yeah, we have, we have the arts confirmed, and we're excited about it because our young people can add so much value to what they do here.
Thank you so much, and I'll snag your email before you leave, but I'd love to schedule something with you and your team.
Awesome, thank you.
Awesome. Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioner.
Good evening.
Excuse me. So my first question would be, what is the maximum amount of kids that we can employ for this time?
Yeah, great question. So, you know, shout out to the mayor. She never gives me a cap. She says, "Any young people in the city of Albany that meets the qualifications, if they go through the process, then her and I need to sit down and figure it out." And thank you to the common council for continuing to fund because without your million-dollar investment in the supplement funds that we receive either through grants or just working with different entities on how to make it happen, I don't think we would be able to have such an open program. I mean, every program that I've spoke to in the last two years have either had to make cuts or caps or a lottery system. We don't have a lottery, so it's open to all young people who qualify.
So my next question is, why is the deadline so early?
So it's a full month because by April 1st, we have to send in the age requirement information to the TANF, to ODTA, in order to verify who's TANF eligible, right? It's April 1st. So if you look across the country, most Summer Youth Employment Programs, either they've ended their registration by now, or they will end around the time we do.
Okay, and then lastly, something that you and I have talked about the last two years. What plan do we have in place to, you know, the kids that we have that start the application process but don't finish it? What plan do we have to kind of address that? Because a lot of those kids need, you know, they need some assistance in meeting their requirements. Like, how can we meet people where they're at and help them get through that process? Because, you know, I remember the number increases for the last two years. And, you know, that's definitely a spot that I would like to provide some support because I would like to see that number go down. And if people are starting out the process, you know, we gotta try to see how we can assist them, you know, finish the process.
Yeah, understood. So one thing we did this year that was really intentional, and James touched on this a little bit, was we started having direct meetings with the school district. This is something that we started, I think, earlier last year with some of our disabled population students because we wanted to make sure that our work sites were meeting their needs. But now we've opened that up and have direct conversations with the school district around, and the school district is 70% of our kids, how we can get them. So all guidance counselors had some of the same information you had. They had this earlier so that we can prepare them. Also, we've been working with our libraries and we'll do clinics. But honestly, this was a part of the reason I wanted to have this meeting with you all is because we need your help with your constituencies. We have a small team here, and we have the rest of the month to go. And with kids not having school tomorrow, we hope that they'll have some time to be able to do this, but we're willing to work with anybody we can, and we'll have some neighborhood conversations as well later on in the summer, in the month. But we hope at this point, no kid is not able to complete the application, you know, due to where we are, how we try to promote the program.
And so lastly, if it's possible, when you get to that point where a list is developed of kids that didn't finish the process, if we could break it down by ward, maybe we could help in that capacity.
Okay, yeah, I like that.
To be able to, you know, get involved however is needed.
Okay, so I like that, and for our team, let's, once we get to the last week, let's be able to use our platform and break out by ward, and then during that last week, we can communicate with the council members and be able to help them and their constituents fill out the applications. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And now we're gonna go to other council members. Firsthand, I still read up. Is Councilmember Keegan?
I lowered my hand because Derek actually asked my question, which was, can we get, you know, more concrete information on whose applications have not been completed so we can assist Parks and Rec with follow-up with those families? That's all. Sorry.
All set. Thank you. Councilmember Flynn, are you raising your hand again? Do you have a question again?
Yeah, I know, Commissioner Jones, we talked about the soccer fields over by Hoffman. Is there any update?
I don't have, I don't have an update as of yet. We are working, we finally got some staff, some more operations staff to take a look at it, so we're excited about that. But we kind of need the weather to relax a little bit, and then we'll be able to see where we are. The other thing is, we're really excited about where Lincoln is, and that may present another opportunity for us. And so thank you to the water department. Lincoln may be an opportunity where we can work a little faster than we anticipate.
And my second question, pickleball, are we gonna do that? I know Councilmember Romero loves pickleball, and so do I. And I probably asked your question, Gabby, sorry. But are you gonna do that this year, or the parks? What's the deal there?
Yeah, we are doing pickleball. We're working right now to get our first designated pickleball court at the golf course. That is gonna be exciting. We'll have four courts there. And then, starting last year, we took our existing tennis courts, I believe we took six, I'm going off the top of my head. We took four to six around the city, and some of our tennis courts are also pickleball courts. The lines are there for folks to play. I know Hoffman, I had an opportunity to play last year with the president of the Pickleball Association for the Capital Region. And, you know, she whipped on me pretty good, but I got a chance to, you know, pick up some game, and I'll see her soon. I'm getting ready, Brittany.
But Councilmember Romero is supposed to be a substantive pickleball player. Thank you.
At Recreation, we welcome our challenges. We spring train in the winter, and we're ready to go.
Awesome, awesome. So Councilmember Tom Hoey's hand up?
Councilmember Romero also has her hand up.
Oh, she's a member of the committee. You want to let her speak first? Yeah, you know, she spoke already, so I was trying to get other members to, if that's okay.
Well, I just want to follow through on the, you mentioned, we brought up soccer, which is close to my heart. You said something about Lincoln Park. Are we putting a soccer field in Lincoln Park?
No, we're not putting a soccer field in Lincoln Park, but we have at Upper Lincoln, we have the individual fields, the small fields, where we can do some, you know, skills and drills work. Before, that was just with lacrosse, so we're gonna try to work with our soccer programs again this year. And who knows, fingers and toes crossed, if the Lincoln Bowl, the way it continues, maybe one side of it will be able to do something later on in the year, but we're unsure about that.
We had talked roughly about, and just vaguely, about the golf course, because there's a lot of acreage. But I can't remember, does the golf course fall under Parks and Rec, or is that under DGS?
No, that's under DGS, but Recreation has the ability, and we have in the past done programming with our youth at the golf course, and that's what we're interested to do again.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Next, we have Councilmember Romero.
Yeah, thank you, Chair and Commissioner. I am so excited. So there's pickleball coming to Albany because that is, that is a big deal for me and my family, who got really into pickleball, and Jack knows that. Thank you. Got really into pickleball at the beginning of COVID and just kind of continued, so that's really exciting. My question, though, was, do you have anything in place with regard to continuity of programming? And what I mean by that is, you mentioned that there were kids in the programming that really liked hard hat-type tech programs. And so is there anything in place right now so that if they like this type of stuff, that we can point them in different directions for additional programming after the summer? Or connect them with other city programming or private partners or something like that? Just so we can keep that interest and fuel that development?
Yes, and thank you for your question. We actually started a couple of years ago. We won a grant from the U.S. Conference of Mayors and from Dollar Wise to do pilot programs outside of our Summer Youth Employment Program. And so this past year, we had a fall call. And so this past year, we had a fall cohort that worked an additional five weeks, uh, those were our older kids, those are seventeen, eighteen-year-olds. Um, and then in the winter, uh, we, we had another cohort that's currently working right now, five weeks. And those young people, um, have different interests, specific interests, and so there is a, a possibility of continuation. We've actually put, um, uh, a request to the mayor, the mayor is fully behind this, this is honestly her idea to continue this. Um, but we put a request in the mayor, uh, so that we would be able to expand that for more young people. Um, we had about thirty-seven, I went off the top of my head, I believe it was like thirty-seven this year. And so we would love to, you know, see that thirty-seven turn into three hundred and seventy or more. Um, and for those five weeks, our young people make the minimum wage, they work at a particular work site. And, uh, it's a similar experience, but just that the work laws change in the school year, right? These are, uh, youth, and so their hours of work change and so their working cards also change, so that's the one thing we work with. But yes, we are continuing it in the fall onwards.
Sounds good, any other members? Alright, without any further questions, uh. Um, Commissioner Jones, I just want to thank you and your staff for all the great work that you do to move our city forward. Uh, you know, as an educator, um, I, I, I care passionately about our youth and I know all of us on the council do. And, you know, having something to do over the summer is so important, um, and just want to say thank you to your staff, uh, thank you for your leadership. Um, so if no one have any other questions, any committee member would like to make a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Seconded by, uh, Councilmember Romero, thank you all so much.
Thank you.